I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting, the Seward Nebraska Development Body. The city has served advised by the Nebraska meaning, open meetings active in business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes posted in the meeting room. A participant signing sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall first appoint you to give an address for the clerk's record and ask the limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. City of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Wilkins, Beck, present. Hamper, Felderman.
Present.
Miller.
Here.
Singleton. Schmidt.
Here.
Hendricks.
Present.
First, I'm this evening. It's consideration of approval of draft minutes of September seventeenth, twenty nineteen.
Who can approve?
Second. Motion in a second. Do you register your votes? Please spread the votes.
In favor, Beck, Felderman, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks, Special.
Items two and three are the consent agenda items for this evening.
Who can approve?
The motion is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion in a second. Do you register your votes? Please spread the votes.
In favor, Beck, Felderman, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks, Special.
Item four, the public hearing. This is liquor license application of Bottle Rocket Brewing LLC doing business as Bottle Rocket Brewing. Two thirty South Fifth Street for Class C liquor license and recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. Bonnie, did you want to say anything?
Just what the title is. We have an application for a Class C Bottle Rocket brewing with holds and L or L? Okay, so they have a catering license with their brewery license, but they're applying for a C.
And C would be on and off sale beer, wine, spirits. So item A, this is consideration of resolution recommending approval of a Class C liquor license for Bottle Rocket Brewing LLC DVA. Bottle Rocket Brewing and then item B would be consideration of recommendation naming Gerald Hopp as manager of the Class C retail liquor license for Bottle Rocket Brewing LLC doing business as Bottle Rocket Brewing. This is a public hearing, so before we start, I'd just like to make, open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone in the public wish to comment on item number four? Seeing no one, then I will close. The public comment portion of the public hearing, open up to the council for any questions or comments. Any questions or comments? Is this to avoid, as far as not having to get STLs for events, or do you plan on carrying beer, wine and spirits on a regular basis?
Yeah, I can, I can address that.
Great, welcome Gerald.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Yes, Gerald Hopp, Oakham Eastridge Drive, right here in Seward. Yeah, what we're doing is applying for the Class C because we had so many events this year. All our STLs in the brewery were all used up by July, so we didn't have any more to use. I actually went to the commission and asked for a couple extra, because we needed a couple extra that we promised some clients and they were okay with that. They said, as long as you apply for a Class C license. And we were, I said, oh, that's perfect, because we're gonna do that anyway. And then what we're gonna do is really use all the alcohols for the special events, so if we have wedding rehearsals, dinners or things like that, we'll do the wine. It gives us opportunity to do other stuff, but we won't, we won't do that unless we get asked, because that's not, that's not who we are. And if we do any, it's gonna be craft. So it'll be just craft Nebraska.
Beer, wine or spirits?
Yeah, so it'll be craft whiskey.
Okay.
Craft vodka, all those. It'll be name brand Nebraska.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions or comments for Gerald? If someone would like to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce the resolution.
Alright. Their resolution has been introduced and it does the, it's resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-four. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Still moved.
Second.
The motion in a second. Do you register your votes? Please spread the votes.
In favor, Beck, Felderman, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks, Special.
And then for item D, this is the unnamed recommendation for naming of the manager. I think we just need a regular motion for this.
Who can approve?
Second.
The motion in a second. Do you register your votes? Please spread the votes.
In favor, Beck, Felderman, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks, Special.
Alright, thank you Gerald.
Thank you.
Item number five, consideration of resolution approving the street closure crossing Highway fifteen for Seward County Chamber Development Partnership Christmas Festival Committee Annual Lighted Christmas Parade Permit on November thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Would anyone like to speak to that? And he's pointing at you.
Everything's the same as usual.
Okay.
Nothing fancy.
Alright, any, any questions or comments?
It is fancy.
Nothing usually fancy.
There's no question that someone could introduce the resolution. Alright, the resolution has been introduced and it designated as resolution number twenty nineteen dash thirty-five. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
I'll approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Do you register your votes? Please spread the votes.
In favor, Beck, Felderman, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks, Special.
Item number six, a discussion of downing pool facility repairs and review priority of budgetary expenditures. I believe we have Director Core?
Yeah.
Or Adam?
Yeah, both of them.
Whoever?
He's taller.
That's fair.
So we started, um, just, Adam, because this is your first time for the council, introduce yourself. Uh, Adam Bodie, Assistant Parks and Recreation Director. So I'm in charge of the pool. I have pool managers and other assistants that kind of help me with that, along with adult sports and youth sports and things like that, so whatever they need me to do, basically.
Great, welcome.
So, we went into the budgetary process with a new pool here, which around here, there's only, we have such a big pool heater, which is four million BTUs and that's not really normal, because we have a big sized pool, which is one hundred and forty thousand gallons. So there's only one company around from Omaha that actually does this process, which is called Control Services. So, they came in with a bid, which was to remove the existing heater that's inside our chemical room, which basically we have, you know, a gravity flow pool, so whenever the chlorine and everything reacts with the actual pool water, it's all in that chemical room where that heater is. So, the recommendation was to move the heater. So the bid was for the dismantling of the original heater and then moving the pool heater outside. So, once we found that out, we realized that we're gonna need to pour a new concrete pad as well as a new building. The original bid was for just basically a carport, which we were told that that was okay to do. And then they came back and said that it needs to be enclosed, so that way no birds or anything or deterioration, just from the weather elements and things like that, could affect the pool heater, which is roughly around a forty-five, forty-six thousand dollar pool heater. So, that bid came back around thirty-six thousand dollars more than what the original bid was for, which was for the ninety-eight thousand. We have a couple options to kind of maneuver that around. Our, our kind of first option would be to basically allocate the money from the roof, which would be that thirty-four thousand, and then also take two thousand from vessel repairs, so that would cover that thirty-six thousand. But then we don't have the roof that we requested for, which I actually went down today. It still leaks in the men's and women's locker room. So, we have some fixtures on top of the roof where it seems like whenever the wind blows, it gets in there, and then we have drywall where that locker room is, so it drips down there. So we're not able to kind of repair the drywall and paint it, just because every time it rains, we get some leakage going on. It's not necessarily a huge deal. Is it an eyesore? Yeah. It doesn't look aesthetically pleasing whenever you first walk in or anything like that. So, that would be option number one. The option number two would be to move the replacement heater to two thousand twenty-one. Try to get away with the heater that we have right now, which we did get new burners in two thousand sixteen. It did work this year. I'm not saying that it will work again next year, because anytime you shut something off for that long period of time and let it rest and then try to fire it back up, you might as well flip a coin. So, that was option number two. Option three would be to actually purchase the heater this year. For, and the bid right now is at forty-one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars, so that would be for the heater. And then what we would do is we would store that heater for this year and then go about the concrete work and building forward, the budgetary process for next year, so we're not allocating money from the roof or kind of rushing a project that's kind of time sensitive. So, the main reason why we're kind of in a little bit of a rush is because they did put a price restraint for October first, which is today. They will allow us to do that tomorrow if we decide to budget that. So, my understanding that it usually goes up about four or five percent per year if we wait to purchase the heater in two thousand twenty-one instead of two thousand twenty. That was our personal recommendation, just because we do, we do still get the price break on the heater, as well as not necessarily trying to rush a bigger project that, that needs a little bit of time to kind of work its way through and, you know, everything has to be certified through the Nebraska Burner Association, so the concrete work has to be certified. Building would have to be certified, which that's not a huge deal. It's basically just the concrete, which is the rebar process and then it has to be at least four feet thick, so, or four inches, I'm sorry. That's actually.
Four, four inches.
So the building is of, of stone, or not stone, but a concrete?
The building would actually just be, just a regular tin building, but it'd be enclosed instead of a carport, which would just be too big, kind of.
How big is the building?
Uh, it'd be, I believe you have it in your sheet there. It's just ten by eleven, I believe, with a slope. So ten feet by eleven feet off of the actual existing chemical building.
And how much did you say that was? Thirty-four thousand?
That was an additional thirty-six thousand for them to do all of the concrete work in the building. So we were first kind of trying to get it done as much in-house as we could, but unfortunately with it being time sensitive like that, everybody gets kind of busy. So, we didn't want to promise a new heater and then all of a sudden, we don't have one for that pool year and then we're, we're losing out on quite a bit of revenue in regards to not having a heated pool.
Okay, so you want to do the.
Our recommendation would be to purchase, no, just to purchase the heater this year and store it for this year.
The whole thing?
And then store it for a year?
And then try to get a little bit more of a detailed explanation on the concrete work as well as the building, to see maybe if we can incorporate down sewer businesses instead of just doing kind of a turnkey operation.
So we're looking at thirty-six K?
We're looking at the actual, the actual pool heater is forty-two, four, five, zero, yeah.
As far as your warranties and things like that, if you purchase it now without it being installed, do they allow that warranty?
They do, so they would come check it up the year after to make sure. So every year we do have a burner company come in and check the heater for the initial startup and then disconnect as well, just to make sure that we're staying in compliance with state rights.
So how long do we anticipate heaters like this lasting?
Up to fifteen years. So the burners that we have in there right now are going at roughly around five to six years, but that's just because they get clogged up with all the chemical reactions and different things and the combustible gas just gets clogged, you know, with that. But, I did call the company and they say usually those burners last, the burners themselves last roughly around twenty to thirty-five years if we keep it in an enclosed building, so.
Any que, other questions?
Hey Bob, have we ever gone a summer where we didn't have a heated pool because it wasn't working?
No, initially we just use it at the beginning to get our temperature up and then by, depending on the weather, by June, July, if we're staying pretty warm, it doesn't kick on. Basically the startup. And with swim team, they come in real early and then water aerobics are at eight, it would be hard not to, not to try to get it heated for that initial, that end of May, first part of June.
And just to be clear too, when we say heated pool, I mean, it's not like the sun. I mean, it's not like, we heated just to get it up to a level as tolerable.
Up to about seventy-seven, seventy-eight degrees is what, is what it is. But when you're putting in close to seven hundred thousand gallons, it takes a while to, to heat that water up initially and it'll run. And then after that, it doesn't usually run. Unless we hit a cold spell in the middle of summer, it'll kick back on. It's just the initial.
So what I would understand is we would buy the heater this year and be able to do the rough repairs?
Correct.
And then next year, look at the budget for the building to put the heater in?
Yes, yes. And again, this was kind of, you know, it's kind of a bigger project, so there's not a lot of people that are touch. I mean, I had two companies that wouldn't even come out and look at it because it was just too big of a project. So, hopefully we can incorporate a little bit more with the concrete work in the building and maybe try to get that cost down a little bit instead of trying to rush something that, hopefully, knock on whatever. The heater that we have will, will make it another year and we can, we can kind of not have to worry about, you know, anything happening. And then again, we will have budget money in case a burner goes out or something like that, so.
Could you add anything?
Um, I did note when we were talking about this, the first question I asked was, well, how many pool, municipal pools heat their pool in the first place? Because I don't believe Lincoln does. And so that questioned that one at first. So we went out and asked basically everybody in my administrator's group, and I would say ninety percent of the pools are actually heated. I think it's just due to size. Ours is probably one of the larger ones that's heated. But you see like Star City Shores and things like that. It's just a computation of gallons that you have in it and then surface area. We have a ton of surface area for how big our pool is. And so that's interacting with the cold air. Makes it a lot harder to heat up and get it up in, in May. But ninety percent of them aren't heated. I was gonna guess they weren't, but they are.
I know.
Yep, wouldn't have guessed.
Any other questions or comments for Adam? Otherwise, if someone would like to make a motion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, that motion is to purchase the heater, store it for a year, and then we will address that in the next budget year.
And do we also include the rub?
I think it's already in the budget.
It's already in the budget.
And this, the heater's already in the budget, right?
Yep, but it was at, again, it was at that original ninety-eight thousand.
About the forty-two just for the years.
So we would be substantially short.
Right, the ninety-eight thousand originally, they had said we could use, we could fence it in, pour the concrete, put a carport, so we added. But it was gonna cost about eighty-five thousand to tear the new one out, put the new one in. And then we, and then had that additional money for that. And then they came back and said, you know, when we talked a couple weeks ago, he's like, well, I think it needs to be enclosed now. So we didn't understand what he was, what he was trying to tell us at the point that we're doing this, or what, or he thought that he could do it and then was told, no, it has to be enclosed. We checked with York. York didn't have one. They had theirs kind of the same thing. They put it in the pump house. And then they initially have moved it outside in the last two years into another building as well. So Adam had checked with them and yeah, they had moved theirs out. Why they designed them to be in, in the pump house where the chlorine and chemicals are is kind of crazy. That he thought that would be caught back when it was designed and it wasn't. But so hopefully, and those old burners lasted for quite a while until, you know, two thousand sixteen, so I'm pretty sure that they were, they're only three years old and get another summer out of them. Don't make that on us.
Bob or Adam, a real quick question. Do you know when they, enclosed building, they want to build? Are they gonna build the building around the heater when they do it?
I believe so.
They're not gonna build the building and then install the heater inside of it?
Correct.
Okay.
They'll put it in and build, building around them with the old stack on the roof and do the old fat one.
Which may also be more technical than something that we could do.
Right. And a lot of that stuff, it, it just gets kind of scary with all the certifications and everything, whenever they come in and check everything, because we don't want to have all that done and all of a sudden, we don't pass an inspection. Because it's something that, you know, not any fault of our own, but that's not what people around here do for like water department or electric department, anything. That's not what they do for a living whenever it comes to that.
So if we're.
One second, Eddie.
I was just gonna make a motion.
Okay, well.
That's, that's fine. I, you know, I just had a question really quick. So if we're building the building around it, then when we need a new one, do we have to take the building down? That's my question.
This pool heater should last longer than the actual pool shell that doweling pool actually has. So, that pool shell is about, I don't know, another twenty years, this heater should last at least twenty-five to thirty years. So we shouldn't have to worry. I mean, we have to move it eventually, I guess, but we'd probably be at that point just looking to strip it for parts. Move it to a different new location.
You know, remove it.
Go to the home.
Thanks, Hannah. Would you like to make a motion?
I would.
Motion is to approve the purchase of the water heater and restore it until next year. The motion is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Do you register your votes? Please spread the votes.
In favor, Beck, Felderman, Miller, Schmidt, Hendricks, Special.
Right, item number seven, consideration of Seward Foundation application and establishing priority for funding. So, Seward Foundation accepts application, but his application need to come from either the school district or from the city. And so, I think almost every, every year, every couple of years, we get applications to us and then we discuss them at the meeting and then the council decide which ones to recommend onto the foundation and then also to prioritize them. So the foundations, for the foundations consideration. And so first we have item seven A, which is application by Park and Recreation Department. It's a military theme, Black Hawk helicopter playground equipment that would be located at Armory Park behind the National Guard Museum. Who wants to take that?
Bobby, you want me to start?
Yeah, me too.
If you're not familiar with, as most of you are, the history of Armory Park, as the National Guard Museum reverted over from the armory to the museum itself, Armory Park was located in the rear of it, on the corner, and that portion of the property is owned by the city of Seward. As that developed and in that process, they kind of stripped down Armory Park to work on the development, bring in things, do parking lots and other things in the background and develop that. And there was anticipation and expectation, I think, by the neighborhood itself and also the guard museum, that Armory Park would be revitalized and, and equipment would be put back in there. We did have some side equipment that we had left over, that Bob had acquired that was discussed. Right now, right now, I don't think there's anything down there. But for the time being that I have been here, there, I think there was two rockers and a picnic table, and that was it. In the most recent development of the guard museum's back theater, we'll say, it's not a theater, but that entire area, not just the performance and outdoor study area, but all of the new equipment that they're putting out there, the trees, the sidewalks, the, the lighting and everything else that was installed over the last year. One of the discussion points was the redevelopment of Armory Park. And I kind of tasked Bob Core when I first got here and discussed this project with Jerry Meyer from the museum, was we need to put something in there that fits the motif of the guard museum. Well, and you know, at the time, the only thing we could ever think of was kind of a McDonald's playground with the normal tubes and slides and stuff that maybe was in camouflage. And I said, my hope is not to do that, that we can somehow find a way to find something that is more conducive to what we're doing down there, because it is such an attraction for the city, that we can do something a little better than that. Because the playground system we have right now is like bright yellow and pink that's located over in the horseshoe, so it would have stood out like a sore thumb back there. And so Bob has looked and looked and looked and looked for years now, since I've been here two years and we've been working on this, and finally made contact with SRPFX. And I still remember the day he brought it into my office, but the final piece of equipment that was selected is essentially a Black Hawk helicopter play system that is a piece of equipment. As soon as we saw it, because the other options they had was a Navy jet and then a, I think, a Blue Angel jet as well. And so this was one that we thought was very much conducive to the National Guard and the Army. And so we immediately grabbed this exact document almost, not this exact one, and I drug Bob over to Jerry's office that day and showed it to Jerry and planning begun to put this together. We have already secured a grant from Rotary. They're gonna help with the matting. This is gonna be a new style of matting we've never done. It's a ported matting. But they've agreed to contribute a few thousand dollars to that as part of their annual project fund. But this is a significant project. We took this to Jerry though. Jerry did confirm this is a piece of equipment that would be used by a National Guard, correct Jerry?
Yes.
That's correct. And he already started providing us with sticker locations and designs, and so if you flip through this book and it may be in your packet that you have, you'll see we already have Nebraska Army National Guard, some, not maybe the official way that we'll sticker this up and finalize some of the decals. But we do have, you know, information about watching your head by the rotors and things like that, that, that they put in here into the design, that we kind of planned to do this with. This kind of goes way beyond my initial imagination for this, as soon as I saw it, I knew this is what we needed to do. The council has approved to cover most of the cost of this play system. It's a pretty expensive play system, but we have had them on site. They've done all the measurements and it will fit. Probably one of the biggest costs is the matting. As I said before, it's a ported matting, but they also have a painted, as you see, there's a helipad underneath it, so that's gonna add to the aesthetic of it. They'll paint that in after it settles. Total project cost on these, I believe Bob's a hundred and four thousand.
Hundred and four thousand.
Approximately.
Forty-four.
Yep. And so, usually our standard systems, we're looking at right now about seventy-five thousand for a standard, standard, standard play system. So, a little bit of an upgrade, but as you can see, this thing is exactly what, what we had hoped for. And looking to build an attraction, it's the same idea we had with Fairway Woods Park, Wake Park now, was building something that stood out from everything else we offer in the city and makes it a destination, not only for the kids that play here in Seward, but anybody else that would come to visit. And we know, I mean, Jerry can talk about how many visitors he has, schoolchildren, everything else that come to the museum. They're gonna enjoy this for years and years to come. So, that's what we came with. We're gonna, after, you know, this application and figuring out where we're at on funding, if this should go through, then we'll roll out a final plan between the guard museum and the city to get this thing teed up. I think our hope is if we do get some foundation funding on this one, is we would also finalize, there's another area of that park that doesn't have equipment in it that we may want to finish off, a swing set or some other pieces of equipment and then be completely done with the project, so. Bob, did I miss anything?
No.
This is a little bit, you know, more than what we would normally do, but you know, one of the things is that the museum has done a tremendous job down there with, with the amount of, of, of money that they've contributed to bring Armory up to that level to, to where it is a museum that we are pretty proud of and, you know, we splurge a little bit on some of the lighting around what they call the battleship property as well. And so it, it makes sense that we want to make sure that we maintain a certain level of quality to kind of match what they've already done with the museum itself. So, we're very excited about this, but because it's a little bit of a pricier item, we are looking to ask the foundation for assistance and, as well as looking for donations as well as we move forward with, with this project. So are there any questions or comments about this item, item seven A? Yes, Helen.
Can you go over what age groups would be eligible to play here? What about the safety aspects? I'm not seeing it from just a distance, but there are all sorts of things that stick out and look like they might be sharp where you could poke into the eye or, I mean.
All knives. It's just lined with knives.
That's a quote from a paper.
What materials are used? I mean, just kind of, and what do you do with it? What, what are they gonna do with it? Playoff opportunities?
Uh, as you go through it, there are, I think there are two slides, some climbing apparatus. Again, most of our playgrounds are not designed for thirteen and fourteen year olds. This is definitely probably designed, Bob, I'm guessing.
Up to about twelve, I think is what they usually.
And probably, I mean, it's not a, it's not a preschool one either. It's not designed for toddlers.
There are, there's places in there that you can walk, you can walk in, like your insiders, the controllers and, and different things that you can walk the kids in. Maybe the, the climbing, the cargo net might not be good for little ones, but the slides aren't very steep. I think they'd be alright.
Uh, for high purposes, it's not terribly high in regards to if you slip or fall out compared to some of our other pieces of equipment. Not that we have an issue with that, but.
And the matting would help with.
Yeah, it's just lower to the ground than some of our standard ones.
So.
Also comes the shade that we don't normally have.
The kids conceivably can get in as far as back here.
There's a slide back there.
There's a slide back there going out the other way.
There's no way that they're gonna be hanging from these things.
No, in front of that has plexiglass. Some of the, that nose of it is like a safety plexiglass and they can't get their head stuck.
You'd be surprised.
And that's, and that's why they went back and put that in there, because it must have had issues, you know, when they were, so they could stick their head through there. And that's what he had told me out there.
So, is for twelve and under and over forty, I think that was from our last meeting?
Okay. Well, yeah, the mother of me worries. Well, the aunt in me thinks this is awesome.
Are there any questions or comments on item seven A? If not. Yeah, welcome. What's going on?
Yeah, welcome. What's going on?
I'm Gerald Meyer, um, thirteen fifteen East Ridge. Uh, I wanted, one mayor and council, I wanna thank you all for the support you've given to the museum. Uh, the, the light poles, banner arms, again, you know, our society pays for the nice banners. We try to keep everything looking nice. We've spent almost about a million dollars, uh, just on the exterior of our building to fix up. If you haven't been to the west property inside of the amphitheater, which is where we'll do concerts for over a thousand people back there on military bands. But that part will be the, the, the common achievement of the thing there. Is, uh, we're starting our, our final, um, projects with the interior of the museum. And guess what the, the focal point of the interior of the museum is? It's a Black Hawk helicopter virtual reality simulator for, for our, uh, for our adults. So, you know, while the kids are back in that plane on the, playing in the playground equipment, uh, for concerts and things like that. So I, I think when, when they brought those plans to me, to show me those pictures, it fit, it, it synced very well with what we're trying to do over the next couple of years till twenty twenty-two. So, uh, I again wanna thank the, the mayor and the council for, uh, for your assistance in making this. You know, right now we're about, probably over four million dollars we've invested in the whole total project there with the museum. So we'll keep investing, uh, because we do have a lot, uh, at stake here. Uh, we do, uh, our goal is to see thirty thousand people a year to bring here to Seward. And we're well on the way. You know, when you see almost, uh, ten thousand people on one day on the Fourth of July, we know we made the right decision to come here to Seward. So, uh, again, I just appreciate everybody's support here. I think playground equipment is absolutely fantastic. It's, it's a perfect finish for the, uh, for the project. As a matter of fact, that amphitheater was not supposed to be done until twenty twenty-two. So we moved that project up. So just having the playground equipment come in here in the future, there's gonna be a perfect fit. So, mayor, thank you.
Yeah, no, and you know, we, this is kind of been a long, long journey. Cause I remember initially built back half of that property, um, that, and I never heard it called the battleship property until, um, the National Guard folks came and that's how they referred to it because from above it has that battleship shape to it. And that back part was always Armory Park. And so as they were doing their plans, we, uh, we were able to transfer some of that property. But, um, I've recalled, there was an issue with, I don't think the National Guard could have, they, what they told us was they could not have equipment like that people would be playing on as part of their facility. And so that's why we retained that corner. So eventually we can have those types of, of, of equipment and, 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 uh, park, um, whether it, it's, uh, this and at the time we didn't even know about this, but something that kids could play on as part of, of that, um, tie-in. So that's where it kind of all, all came from and that's how we got where we are. So, and any other questions or comments on seven A? Otherwise, yes, is you want?
I just have a quick question. How much of it is like hand for handicap children or handicap accessible? Is there, is there anything?
I don't imagine this item would be itself, but I'm not sure what else that we have.
I think there's a portion of it on the exterior and I know with the matting, rather than having the chrome rubber, the loose chrome rubber or the, um, the wood chips that we've used in the past. That's why we wanted to go with the, the style of matting. Also, the entire park is already encircled by a sidewalk now. And so you can transition off and meet ADA by transitioning right off the sidewalk onto the play mat with this smooth surface play mat. And so that's why we wanted to up, make sure we upgraded and got it all done. So it's, makes it more accessible than we normally would have in our parks.
So maybe if we considered like this swing set or something like that to where we could have a handicap, accessible swing or something to incorporate.
There's still room for additional items. This is just a big ticket one that we wanted to get out of the way. And so hopefully, um, so with, with that, what I'll do is we're gonna move down to seven B and, and keep going. Then we'll come back and, and ask the council for action and, and we need to prioritize these at the end. So item B, if there's any question or comments on A, I'll go to item seven B. Application by library department. This is to add silhouette lights around the library for seasonal, um, which is have winter and Fourth of July. Um, and then also I think C is also application by library department to purchase and install programmable digital sign west of the library along Highway fifteen. Becky, did you wanna come up and talk?
No.
Okay.
What's your question?
Do you have any, any questions about either items B or C? So I assume that the decorative lighting, it would, which is, um, so the, the program, so the silhouette lights, will there be different colors or just white?
Just like the rest of.
It'd be the white to match.
Okay. Well, it says for winter, Fourth of July. I didn't know if you had, if you're into any color, uh, different.
I think.
Yeah.
I think downtown, when they put the lights on for the Fourth, they're all just the white lights.
Okay, sure.
And I will say that number was based on a loose estimate. The other, the digital sign is an actual quality.
Okay.
And both of these projects were, um, brought by the Seward Library Foundation. And they're asking, uh, for additional support besides what they can do.
Any questions or comments on B or C?
Since this is for us tasking it a priority, is there any priority that you received from the foundation on these two projects themselves?
The digital sign is something they're super excited about and I think they want that to happen. They're at, for the silhouette lights, they're asking for community donations like the library. And, uh, will kick off this fall. We have not kicked it off yet. Cause we're kind of hoping to know what a match might be before, you know, the chamber did such a great job and just like that, got those garlands last year and that excited the library foundation for some community fundraising for the lights. We don't have a light pole. I don't think they'll take it again, but.
Take it by a ball.
By, I know, we talked, somebody feed a string. Anyway, but because we don't have hard figures on that, we have to go out for es- or for actual codes. And so I don't think we'll be able to get that done this, uh, fall. So that's a lot, a little longer term. The, uh, digital sign is ready to go as soon as I make the call.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you. Now I'll move on to item D. Uh, this is application by Seward Civic Center. This is for a wheelchair lift in the civic center. Would you like to come up and double the vote? Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. My name's Rick Anikot, twelve thirty North Seventh, Seward, Nebraska. And, uh, I'm on the Seward Civic Center Commission and we've been working on this project for several years now. And what it is, is what we're trying to do is connect the old building with the old bill, the new building with the old building. And right now you have to go out the north door with the wheelchair and you have to go along the north building, get in the elevator and then get in it. Uh, that takes you to the basement or the middle floor, the top floor. Now, if it's raining like today or snowing or ice cold outside, it's a real pain in the rear for these people in the wheelchair. And it's a, it's a, something that, that shouldn't be in the beginning. It should've never been built this way. Uh, we have had contractors and architects come in and give us quotes and stuff. Uh, this is a project that we wanna get started on right away. Uh, the lift is gonna cost, uh, twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. And this is through O'Keefe. They are also the ones who put in the elevator. And, uh, the Seward Foundation, uh, helped on that also. Um, maintenance wise, when they come inspect our elevator, they can inspect the ramp at the same time. Do you all know where we're talking about putting this? Have you been to the civic center?
Yeah.
Okay, on the north, north step going downstairs and those five going up and three on the old one. We're looking at putting it right there at that lift. We'll have to tear into the wall in, into boardroom three and make that a little bit bigger. And then we'll be able to put the ramp in there. And hopefully this new ramp that they showed us here just recently, it'll go up those five steps and then we'll be able to fold it up.
If I can interrupt a little bit, it's not a ramp. It's an inclined, uh, wheelchair stair. Okay, goes up over the top of the stairs.
Kinda like you see these commercials with these old people going, taking riding up the steps. This is about, well, I didn't mean it that way. I'm old, let me tell you. But that's about what you're looking at. And this would fold up. So we're hoping that there's gonna be enough room in there now where we don't have to tear out, you know, we'll be able to use the steps.
So you'd have this next to the steps?
Yes, this can be attached to the wall and it's gonna be right next to the steps or going right over the top of it.
So fold it up and out of the way essentially, and when needed you can put it down to use.
Correct.
Perfect.
Yep.
So do your building renovation plans include any sort of total redamp of that area?
Well, if we get the ramp in there, I think everything, uh, or the incline, if we get that in there, that'll pretty much take care of most of our problems that we have with the building. Right now, that's our main stumbling block is getting people from the old building to the, from side to side without having to take them outside.
You guys did do quite a bit of architectural research though and have lots of people look at it and there.
Every time we came up with a plan.
There's no good way to.
It, it got bombed.
And the cost prohibitive and.
I, yeah.
Lots of things.
Right now our project, well, I think we have budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get this accomplished.
Any other questions? Yes, Chris?
Just, just gonna ask the obvious question. So if we're putting a movable ramp in, is there a reason you just can't build right over the top of the stairs and just make it a permanent slope?
I don't. Yeah, it, it can only be a certain degree for ADA.
Yeah.
I think it's, what is it, one foot for, for twenty feet or something like that.
It'd be too steep if you were just, uh, making it as a true ramp.
You couldn't just put a ramp there. We looked at that also.
You'd have to start the ramp like in Megan's office to get it. I'm ser- I'm not joking. They actually looked at this.
Yeah, we did. We, it was one of our plans that we looked at. And, uh, boardroom three was gonna become a, a storage room. Cause you're gonna go in there and bust that all out.
Any other questions or comments? No, thank you, Rick, for coming to see me.
I just have one.
Yes, granted.
You know that Fourth of July, there's a lot of events and stuff that happen within the building. And you get that many people coming through, there are gonna be some handicap people. And I don't know if you've seen in the past, but sometimes you'll see the people leave their handicap apparatus outside. I don't care if it's a scooter or a walker or whatever, and then somebody helps them up in order to get to that particular area. So I think, uh, when you look at that and it's an integral part of the Fourth of July, I think it's a pretty important project to try to have done.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. We wanna make sure that we have everything as accessible as, as possible. So. Any other questions? If not, then I'll circle back. So we have four items under, under seven. And, um, basically we need to prioritize the list before we make recommendations. Assuming, um, unless there's an item you don't wanna recommend, um, then we would need to still re- prioritize the remaining items. Great. Did you want to add anything?
Becky, on your application, did you assign a dollar amount to either one of yours?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think the civic center did.
Yeah, we did. This is just the lift only that we're trying.
So twenty-eight for the lift and then Becky's are listed. Do you have the, you have that packet over there?
So the sign price, project cost is twenty-eight, five fifty total.
Which we're looking at the.
The, the digital sign. So from the Seward Foundation source of funds had listed as six thousand seven hundred and forty. And then the lights on the application, eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-five for the lighting, which was three thousand from the Seward Foundation. That's part of that cost.
And then the civic center was twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand five hundred.
And you're asking for that whole portion from the foundation, correct?
Any part the foundation feels that they wanna give us, we'll be happy and take whatever.
Well, the, the thing is, is every, all the other applications have a specific dollar amount required.
We have a dollar amount in, in, in mind, uh, we could probably get ten thousand dollars.
So are we limited here as to how much we can recommend?
That's, that was my question too.
So we could recommend all of them and just prioritize the list?
And then the foundation sorts it out themselves.
We wanna make sure it's, it's clear as what we're asking, what, what we're asking. So it gives us the, um, second dollar amounts. You have a preference as far as any order of these or any that you feel should be the top priority or any that you feel, um.
I think the ADA lift should be a priority. That's been the longest standing probably, I believe, and it needs the most attention because it is an ADA issue. And then I would go with the, um, with the playground and then the library two together. That's what came to my, I mean, I'm not asking for accessible.
I don't know what the, what money the foundation has.
Yeah, that was my question. Do we have any idea what kind of money is there right now?
We'd have to confirm with Jennifer on how much there is. It also goes, when, when it does go to the foundation, they can't ju- just be rewarded how much the board approves at that time. So it may not be full amount at that point as well.
We have that meeting in November, it's already?
It should be coming up, yeah, the, year, end of the year one.
I assume that's what this would be.
Yeah.
Right.
Addressed at that time.
And, and we take these twice a year. Nathan and then now October.
I agree with Ellen's prioritization. Get the ADA done and then the, the park and then the library. I assume you'd want the, the sign before the, the silhouette lighting.
And it's possible the library foundation might say, we're just doing that too. I, they have a meeting a week from March eight.
So do we need a motion to put that prioritization in place?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
I would second.
So the motion would be to order then D, A, C, B, correct?
I, I do have a page of, yes.
I just wanna make sure. So item D, the civic center first, two would be the A, the park. And three would be the, uh, application for the sign, programmable sign. And then four would be this is the wet lighting.
Correct.
Is that okay?
At, at the full amount of each application.
Yes.
And so, and I would also add is that, um, especially for those out in the audience is to, I know in the past we had some pickups with, um, going, with having someone at that meeting, the foundation meeting to, to, um, I think, to pitch or to present. So just make sure that you have that on your calendar when you go so that you don't happen to miss that meeting. I think we did that one year where somehow the word didn't get out and, and people were disappointed because they would've sent someone to present and they didn't. So, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Saying no, congrats to your votes. Please spread the votes.
I'm in favor. Beth Calderman, Miller Schmidt, Kenneth Bush.
Thank you all for coming this evening on these items. These are very important to the community. Um, item number eight, we have the administrative report.
Uh, nothing in particular on that one right now. If I can answer a question.
Yeah. Any questions for Greg? Is there a motion to accept the report?
So.
Second. Motion and second. Congrats to your votes. Please spread the votes.
I'm in favor. Beth Calderman, Miller Schmidt, Kenneth Bush.
Are there any future requests for council to get items or administrative action?
Oh, we had a, had a, just a follow-up from a constituent email just on the corner of, I don't know what it was, back in Columbia. Columbia? Maybe like just look at some enforcement issues there or that, that one, I guess was the only thing.
At this point, I think we can handle it administratively. I don't know if there's a.
Yeah.
Need for council action unless we feel like we can.
I, I would agree.
Okay. Any other items? If not, um, next item is upcoming of, uh, announcement of upcoming events. Jonathan?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Okay, we have, uh, coffee and contacts this Thursday and also business after hours, um, on Thursday, the third. And so I'm sure to see all that updates through the Blue River Buzz. And then, um, we're celebrating, uh, manufacturing day as we do in October and years past, uh, partnership with Southeast Community College. So excited to partner with our local schools on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, next we have item number nine is a strategy session with city attorney to provide negotiation guidance considering real estate interests at the commercial rail campus. concerning real estate interests at the commercial rail campus development area. Do you want to add to that, Kelly? Someone have a motion they'd like to make?
I move that the city council go into closed session with the mayor, the city administrator, the city engineer Jake Vazza, SECDP CEO Jonathan Jank, and the city attorney for the protection of the public interest, and to discuss the commercial rail campus development area real estate interests and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance for a period of, I would say, thirty minutes.
Can I leave a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Leave a motion and a second, do you ready to your votes? Please spread the votes.
I'm in favor, Beth Calderman Miller Schmidt Penner.
The council has voted to go into closed session to the protection of the public interest to discuss the commercial rail campus development area real estate interests and to provide the city attorney with negotiating guidance. We are now in closed session.
No additional action will be taken.